Good afternoon, members. It is a point in time and we have a quorum. Welcome to the meeting of the Public Accounts Committee concerning chapter six of the audit's report number eighty-four, Streets Cleanliness or Streets Cleansing Services. This is the first public hearing. The witnesses today are Mr. Che Jin Hwan, Secretary for E and E, Ms. Irene Young, Prime Minister Secretary for E and E, Mr. Donald M. Kit, Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene, and the team. First of all, any declaration of interest from members concerning this chapter? There being none, I now defer to Professor Lam Chi Yun, the Director of Audits, to brief us. Thank you, Chairman. Thanks for inviting us to this public hearing. Some brief points on chapter six, Streets Cleansing Services of Audit Report Number Eighty-four. Now I give my heartfelt thanks to the FEHD for their support and cooperation during our investigation. The report is separated into four parts. Part one of the report explains the background of the audits. Street cleansing services include street sweeping services, street washing services, gully cleansing services, and poster removal services. Now for street cleansing services, it is delivered by FEHD's in-house staff and outsourced staff. The contractors are responsible for eighty-two percent of these street cleansing services delivered. Now our audit results are published in parts two to four of the chapter. Part two is on monitoring of service delivery. Part three, tackling illegal disposal of refuse. And finally, part four, other related issues. Concerning the matters identified during the audits, the Audit Commission has offered thirty-seven recommendations to the FEHD and are agreed by the Director. Once again, we thank the FEHD. Thank you. Thank you, Professor Nelson Lam. Now I defer the floor to Mr. Che Jin Hwan.
Chairman, I thank the Audit Commission and the colleagues for conducting a comprehensive review on the streets cleansing services of the FEHD and made invaluable recommendations concerning strengthening of surface monitoring, enforcement measures, and application of technologies. We agree with the proposals and recommendations. The FEHD has taken steps to implement parts of the recommendations and is actively following up on the remaining ones. Streets cleanliness is an important part of environmental hygiene and is closely related to our lives. A clean streetscape not only offer a favorable living environment for citizens, a tidy and clean landscape also enhances our international image and attracts tourists. We are dedicated to enhancing the streets cleanliness level. Over the years, many measures were adopted by the FEHD to improve the monitoring of streets cleansing services and enhance enforcement. There are, there have been obvious improvements to the streets cleanliness level, which is well recognized. Now we are adopting technologies to enhance the efficiency and quality of streets cleansing and sweeping services, enhancing OSH of frontline offices, and enhance enforcement efficiency, including enhancing the application scope of mini mechanical sweepers from one thousand eight hundred surface points to three thousand six hundred. And also dedicated enforcement teams have been, have been deployed with IP cameras to enhance enforcement of law on the issue of refuse, refuge disposal. Multiple approaches have been implemented to reduce the number of refused disposal black spots. Now the EEB will continue to supervise the FEHD to implement the recommendations of, from the Audit Commissions and will provide policy support to enhance the efficacy and effectiveness of the monitoring of streets cleaning services. Now I would now invite the Director of Environmental Hygiene to report to members of the, on the follow-up actions taken by the FEHD. Mr. Donald M.
Thank you, Chairman. As mentioned by the Secretary, streets cleanliness is an important part of environmental hygiene as is closely related to people's life. Now we have been dedicated to offering streets cleansing services and have been using various measures to enhance the efficiency. We all agree that the hygiene standard has improved over the past few years. We believe that only through continuous improvements can we enhance the effectiveness of streets cleansing services. Now we thank the Audit Commission for conducting a comprehensive review on our services and also for their recommendations on using technologies, enhancing the monitoring system, and tackling illegal disposal of refuse. Now we have already implemented some recommendations and will actively follow up on the remaining ones. Specifically speaking, in terms of monitoring of streets cleaning services, to enhance the inspection and reporting mechanism, besides reviewing the relevant guidelines, we will further use technologies to enhance monitoring. We are studying the establishment of a comprehensive information system to enhance the efficiency of monitoring through auto notification systems and allow contractors and in-house staff to submit automatic reports. And also we are reviewing the assessment or evaluation system of outsourced cleansing contracts so that the tender assessment process can more effectively reflect the past performance of contractors. In terms of enforcement, the DETs and also the IP cam, cameras are effective in tech, in cracking down on illegal disposal of refuse. Now we will continue to review the formation of the DETs and deploy manpower more flexibly. We will continue to update and enhance the relevant working guidelines and also the work program and work reports contents to enhance the system. We plan to significantly increase the number of locations with IP cameras and we will continue to review the guidelines on the use of IP cameras. The FEHD has been actively introducing new technologies to automate the streets cleaning services. Now besides the information system and the IP cameras, as well as the high-speed washing vehicle and pressure washer surface cleaners, we are also deploying automated cleaning robots and power-assisted trolleys to help our frontline staff to deliver their services. We will continue to deploy more technologies. Once again, we thank the Audit Commission for their recommendations. We will be happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Director. Now we will start asking the witnesses questions. Now the member in charge is Mr. Michael Look. As usual, we will give Mr. Michael Look twenty minutes and five minutes for other members. Now there were suggestions that we should start discussing part one and part two of the report together. Is there any view? If not, then Mr. Michael Look.
Thank you, Chairman. Now this chapter is about streets cleansing services. I thank the thirteen thousand two hundred cleaning workers to keep our streets clean. Their efforts must be recognized. So the suggestions we are going to make is only for improving and perfecting the work. We thank the hard work of these frontline workers. So a question in relation to the well-being of outsourced workers. Now among the thirteen thousand two hundred workers, some, one, some ten thousand two hundred workers are employed by contractors. There are only three thousand in-house staff accounting for twenty-two point seven nine percent of the total cleansing force. Now there are different views on the outsourcing model. But from the point of view of value for money, paragraph one point eight, it emphasizes that the outsourcing policy aims at greater cost-effectiveness and flexibility in the delivery of services. Now with the improvements in the outsourcing system over the past few years, especially with the introduction of the point system, some frontline workers are getting better paid. So we thank the government for that. But then comes the problem. The administrative cost by outsourcing the contracts is similar to delivering the work with in-house staff themselves. So concerning the outsourcing mechanism, is there value for money assessments on the per capita cost of each outsourced worker? Besides salary, there is also the management cost. So is there side-by-side comparison between outsourced work and in-house work? Now, maybe in-house staff of the FEHD can perform the work better but with higher cost? Is there a comparison concerning the service quality and the cost? Thank you. From a value for money point of view, over the past few years, the ratio of outsourced workers was some twenty percent or eighty percent. Now compared with works delivered by in-house staff, what is the difference in terms of quality and cost? Now the comparison is difficult because for outsourced work, supervision is required. And we are deploying the same group of staff to monitor the work delivered by in-house staff as well. So it is very difficult to arrive at a breakdown from a technical point of view. Now in terms of streets cleansing, the biggest part of cost is manpower, whether in-house or outsourced. So we think that the salary or wages for outsourced workers are similar to that of the in-house staff. So from a cost point of view, the difference is negligible. Mr. Michael Look, now for a grade-two workers, the starting points of the salary is fifteen thousand dollars. What about the outsourced workers? Do you have the most updated figure on the average wage? Now from my understanding, it should be thirteen thousand or more. Can you give us latest figure? Mr. Donald M.
I do have the figure. I'm just giving the answer from my memory. I can confirm that later, but it should be some fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars. So that's even higher than expected. So I think from the point of view of workers, you have indeed enhanced the outsourcing mechanism. But the employers need to make a profit as well and then you need to deploy supervisors to monitor their work. So wouldn't it be even more cost-efficient by deploying our in-house staff or hiring outsourced workers yourselves? Maybe we can have a statutory body called the Streets Cleansing Department for hiring cleaning workers. Now you said a comparison is difficult to conduct, but I really want the government to conduct this comparison on the cost-effectiveness between the two. What about service quality? A street cleaned by your in-house staff compared with that by outsourced workers, which one is cleaner?
Mr. M., Director, before I answer this question, let me clarify my answer. By the end of January twenty twenty-five, for ongoing outsourcing, outsourced contracts, the average salary for cleaning workers is fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Now concerning comparison of service quality, eighty percent of our work is outsourced. So concerning the standard of monitoring, we adopt the same standard to assess the cleanliness of the streets. So we don't necessarily think that work delivered by outsourced staff or in-house staff is better. We use the same standard to assess the work. I understand, Director, the standard should be the same, but I think Mr. Michael Look's question is whether you have assessed locations cleaned by your in-house staff compared with locations cleaned by outsourced staff. Is there a difference in terms of the performance? On this question, Chairman, according to our colleagues, according to the same standard, we have not received more complaints from locations cleaned by outsourced workers or in-house staff. Now concerning the average rate of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, is that the minimum wage for workers hired by you or the minimum wage for workers hired by contractors? That was the wage for ongoing contracts for outsourced staff. What about your in-house staff? Or workers hired by the FEHD? Would, are the wages higher or lower? Can I answer the question later? Thank you, Mr. Michael Look. Chairman, I understand what you are trying to ask. Fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, that should be the average wage for workers. Is that right? Mr. M. Now for workman two, the average rate is, or the starting points of the salary is fifteen thousand one hundred seventy-five to seven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. That's workman two. Now the monthly salary for Ganga is sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-five to nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars. Now you have to take into account that the employers or the contractors are making a profit as well. So the amount should be higher than fifteen thousand dollars. So what is the average wage for each worker? Now the minimum wage is some fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So what's the average wage for our ongoing contracts? I think that's your question, right? Are they take, take-home payments? I mean, the take-home pay. Ms. Look, please wait for me to call you to speak because we have to wait for the camera to pan to you. My apologies, Chairman. Fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, that's the direct pay or take-home pay of outsourced workers. But there are other costs for outsourced work as well. For example, administrative and management's cost. So what is the per capita cost for outsourced workers? Including the profits made by the company? Sorry, I don't have the figure now. Now the figure I gave you was the reference point based on the comparison between contract wages and our in-house staff's wages. Now concerning other costs beyond salary, I don't have the figure right now. Ms. Look, so I hope the government will continue to review the outsourcing policy. Now paragraph two point two, two point six, concerning the monitoring of outsourced streets cleansing services, the Audit Commission has examined the daily attendance records of the three district environmental hygiene offices. You have examined nine months of daily attendance records. On some days, contractors' workmen did not attend the shift. So the Audit Commission is concerned about the difference between the record and the actual attendance. It causes some concern and it makes us worry that the works delivered would be substandard and we are, we would doubt whether the contractors have filed false reports. Now according to my understanding, there are sometimes making up of records, especially when records are made on paper. It's very easy to falsify the reports. So paragraph two point six, the three districts, central and western districts, Yunnan Long and Shamshepo. Now in December in twenty twenty-three, there were seven out of nine thousand three hundred shifts and one out of seven thousand nine hundred thirty-six shifts in Shamshepo and three out of eight thousand four hundred and one work shifts in Yunnan Long where no attendance was recorded.
Chairman, well, my question isn't just about the figures we can see from the papers. These figures are actually quite satisfying. They are quite satisfactory to me. Even the rates are really so low, then I'm already satisfied with the figures. I'd like to know how subcontractors look for relief workers in, so that they could achieve such a high attendance record. Say usually I have eleven workers on a shift, then there is always a relief worker on each shift. What if a worker calls in sick on a day? Then immediately the contractor can look for relief workers to stand in for the worker who has fallen sick? Mr. Donald M. In paragraph two point six, we have the attendance record and there is a requirement. The contractors need to submit the daily attendance records for our inspection. The records show the number of workers who have indeed attended the shift. The records need to be submitted to us. From the audit report, as Mr. Michael Look mentioned, on some shifts, cleansing services were unperformed. Workers didn't show up for work. Seven, one, three. These are the figures just now mentioned. We are ready to review the records. Apart from the daily attendance records that need to be submitted to us towards the end of a month, the monthly attendance records need to be submitted to us after they are verified by an auditor. Then we check the attendance books as well as the daily attendance records. Indeed, those shifts were taken up by some workers, but then there were unclear records of attendance. As Mr. Michael Look mentioned, how can we or contractors make sure there are indeed workers on each shift? We have already set out very clearly in the contracts. Every day contractors need to submit the number of workers who have turn of work for each beat on manpower deployment in addition to general workers. There are also relief workers who will stand in for workers who have fallen sick. That is to ensure the workers in attendance will meet in the minimum legal requirement. Mr. Michael Look, that means tens of thousands of days. There wasn't one single shift that saw an absent worker. Well, true, I don't have any evidence. Just now the department said that the contractor knows very clearly they do have the responsibility for making sure there are sufficient staff members or workers turning up for work. So I'd like to know how the contractors could make sure all workers turn up for work. How could they immediately call relief workers to turn up for work when there were workers who have fallen sick? I'm left scratching my heads. Sometimes when a staff member falls sick, it's difficult for us to look for a relief worker. So how could the FEHD or the contractors be so powerful as to look for staff members or workers to act as relief workers whenever there are workers who have fallen sick? Mr. Donald M. Well, I will take this question on two levels. After we receive the attendance record, we conduct, we conduct daily inspections. We conduct site visits. We also conduct risk-based visits. They are to make sure the contractors are fulfilling all the contractual provisions. Usually we identified in attendance very quickly. That is because we receive complaints about miscellaneous objects being piled up on manpower deployment. As just now we mentioned, contractors know for a particular beat, they need to make sure two workers will turn up for work. Otherwise, that will lead to a deduction of money. So I believe they have already factored in this factor. They have a sketchy idea of the attendance record. So when it comes to the manpower planning and manpower deployment, I believe contractors will plan ahead. Regarding the three districts mentioned, just now you said there were police operations or surprise checks on these offices. In the event of surprise checks, did you identify any inattendants? Or did you not identify any irregularities or inattendants? Mr. Donald M., regarding the three cases mentioned in the audit report, we did look for the attendance record and the monthly statement on the monthly record to check against each other. In relation to daily inspections, yes, we carry out such inspections on a daily basis and we didn't identify any special situations in these three districts. Mr. Michael Look, just like on a soccer field, even if you have one fewer player, it doesn't mean that you will lose the match right away. About twenty percent of the workers are civil servants. What about their in-attendance rate? Close to zero likewise? Or is it not close to zero? Whenever someone falls, someone fell sick, they won't turn up for work? In subsequent chapters, we're going to touch on the in-attendance in relation to streets cleansing. In some districts, the figures are higher than some other districts. And we will give members a fuller account later on when we reach that section. Of course, we don't want to see a high in-attendance rate, but there are tens of thousands of days. But we didn't identify any in-attendance record unless the contractor Unless the contractor has superb experience when it comes to the management, you do have to share with us. Otherwise, how can you make sure the in attendance rate is very low? My time's up. I'm going to ask later on. Next, Mister Eman Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on what was mentioned by the lead member, Mister Michael Look. In two point seven, senior foreman reviewed the daily and daily attendance records submitted by the contractors. How can you explain the fact that the Audit Commission was able to identify in attendance whereas the senior foreman wasn't able to identify this? Mister Donald Ng. Just now we talked about the daily in its daily attendance record. The foreman checked the record and made sure that a worker turned up for work. If there is no in attendance, the senior foreman needs to remind the contractor to remind the relevant workers to turn up for work. As mentioned in the audit report, the senior foreman had an oversight. The figures may not be high, but the situation is still not satisfactory. Therefore, how can we make sure the senior foreman will check against the attendance record and will try more cautiously? We have already fine-tuned our inspection mechanism. The existing mechanism is that the foreman will check the record, and that will be it. But now we have already made enhancement to the mechanism. After the senior foreman has checked the record, the supervisor will have to check the attendance record once again. That is to ensure there is no in attendance at all. Mister Eman Wong. Just now the secretary said in the opening remarks that technologies will be employed in order to improve the situation. Will technologies be employed in this regard? Mister Donald Ng.
Thank you. Just now we talked about having one more level of inspection. And we do have a plan to devise a system, a computer system to digitalize different attendance records. The aim is to minimize oversights by frontline workers. Mister Eman Wong. At present, paper-based records are used to mark the attendance record as well as the in, and the in attendance record. This is subject to mistakes, and that is understandable. But I find it weird even the Audit Commission was able to identify the in attendance whereas the senior foreman wasn't able to identify the in attendance records. How can technologies be used in order to minimize in attendance records? Say at primary schools, we do have a book to check the attendance record of students. We marked P and A. A meaning absent. And we marked A in red. This is actually a basic way of marking in attendance records. Otherwise, you can't really blame the senior foreman. There are tens of thousands of days in the record. If we need to manually check all the records, that is not cost effective. So what mechanism is in place in order that you can identify irregularities or in attendance more easily? Let me talk about the pa- paper-based record used nowadays. Say if there are ten workers on each shift, the names of ten workers will have to be listed. If a worker doesn't turn up for work, his or her name will be crossed out. Then a relief worker will stand in for the absent worker. And that is the existing mechanism for paper-based record. As member mentioned, such, such a practice is prone to human mistakes. As we mentioned, we are going to devise a computer system, and we are thinking about what functions to be added. Say paper-based records will no longer be used. Computerized system will be used to mark attendance records. Computers will also be able to identify in attendance. In the event that a worker doesn't turn up for work, the foreman will be notified or reminded on the in attendance of that worker concerned.
Mister Eman Wong, thank you. I'd like to follow up on two point nine. It was said there were emergency inspections. I'd like to know what it means when it comes to emergency inspections. When we, when we receive complaints or any piling up of litter on the streets, then we'll have to take action immediately. Emergency inspections refer to such checks. Well, do you have any record of such emergency checks?
We did look into this situation, but it is not the case that for every single case our staff member has taken a record on the urgent inspections conducted. Mister Eman Wong, well, how can I make sure that your staff member did conduct the urgent inspection? I'm not saying that I don't believe, I don't trust workers. But is it that difficult to have a record of such urgent inspections? What is the difficulty of having record of such urgent inspections? In two point nine, urgent inspections are mainly about the central western D E H O. There are a total of three D E H Os mentioned, and we're focusing on the central western D E H O in this regard. The quality concern admitted that he didn't fully understand the job, the job requirement. What Mister Eman Wong mentioned is exactly what we need to improve upon in the case of urgent inspections. If different D E H O, different D E H Os see similar cases, then we'll have to note um what inspections have been taken, say self-disciplinary self-discipline quality inspections. I believe Mister Eman Wong is referring to paragraph nine point two. It's about the self-discipline quality inspection. In the central western D E H O, the relevant workers or staff members didn't conduct the self-discipline quality inspections. Instead, these staff members conducted urgent inspections instead. Just now Mister Eman Wong asked whether we should keep a record on the urgent inspections performed. I agree with Mister Eman Wong. The staff member didn't do this, so in this regard, we will improve the requirement and guidelines. If we need to conduct urgent inspections in addition to self-discipline quality inspections, we'll try more cautiously and we will also mark the record. Just now Mister Donald Ng said that they would enhance the guidelines. Can I take it as the fact that you do have guidelines at present? If we are not conducting self-discipline quality inspections and we are conducting other kinds of inspections, we don't have such detailed record. As you mentioned, you do want to know what kind of inspections we have performed, and we will take the record more clearly, and that is exactly what we need to improve. Mister Eman Wong. I'm not sure how urgent these urgent inspections are, but I believe you do have a record of such urgent inspections. Just now the director mentioned there are vehicles, and we have vehicle insurance. We need to record the time of departure of the vehicles and what personnel are on board. So I believe that the administration should, should improve upon this area. Chairman, I'd like to ask about two point one one B. It's about Shamshepo central western D E H O offices. In twenty-one months, five percent, that is one month, in an inspection wasn't conducted. And I'd like to confirm whether a formal inspection hasn't, hasn't been conducted in one month.
Mister Ng. Yes, there was one less inspection done in that month, and then it was made up in the month that followed. Mister Wong, oh, what's the point of it? Now, for instance, I have to inspect a, a place uh four times, once every week to ensure environmental hygiene. If I have a made-up visit the month afterwards, then it will not make the street cleaner. Now you can say that for this month I don't have the records, and then you can't assume the next month that there will be the similar amount of refuse on the streets. That's not the case. Mister Ng, uh this is just an explanation of uh facts. We're not saying that uh there supposed to be four inspections per month and only two are done in a month and six in the second. Oh, we do not condone such practice in future in our I T system. We will do this. We will make clear the number of inspections to be done in a month. And if uh is not complied with in a month, we will issue a warning or notification for the staff member concerned and his supervisor to understand that there was one less inspection done and it should be made up as soon as possible. Mister Wong, I'd like to know whether you have the minimum number of inspections to be done per month. Mister Ng. Thank you, Chair. For a different types of inspections, we have the minimum number required. Now, for the daily inspections, now the foreman will have to do the inspections on a daily basis. This is about daily inspections. Say for example, for formal inspections, we'll require that to be done once a month for overseers, for uh senior inspectors or inspectors once a month. And then there should be one formal inspection done in a month. And for us, um assigned risk-based surprise inspections, senior inspectors of health will have to done no less than once per week. And that has to be done by uh health inspectors or senior inspectors. So uh health inspectors are once or twice a month, and then senior inspectors more often. So depending on the type and also uh the purpose, we have different requirements. Mister Wong, now I'd like to ask about table one. Under para two point one two, because no uh specified dates were included. I'd like to know the reason why no dates were included, because they were filled out manually. Table one under para two point one two. Yes. In future, we'll require staff members concerned to submit reports. We have timeframes for submission of reports. And then uh for uh examination or review of these reports, there will also be timeframes specified. Mister Wong asked how come for some reports, they were not dated? Of course, that was not a desirable practice. In future, we hope to reduce the requirement for um reports to be filled out manually. We will ensure that there are compliances and there will be better quality assurance for reports submitted. Mister Eman Wong. So you talked about uh health inspectors. I think they are already senior staff. They are not frontline workers. So they have committed such minor mistakes. Do you have a penalty system? How do you follow up with such cases? Now, we talk about two things. You should uh give reinforcement, and they should also be penalized. That is, you should have a counter-stick system. So how can you assure that such mistakes will not appear again? Now, we do not regard that as a minor mistake. If the dates are wrong, we have to look at the uh workload of our staff, whether it was heavy or light, and whether we have to take into account other consider other factors. And as for a type pose, and we will follow up on such oversight. Mister Eman Wong. Now, according, I have to make clear that the reports were not dated. It's not that the date was wrong. You know, it is important for formal documents, they must be dated. The administration must face up to this issue. I have one more question. Para two point one five A B. About uh uh warning letters and default notices, um uh not issued in accordance with the stipulated timeframe. I'd like to know the actual mechanism and practice. For warning letters, now in para two point one four, we say that we have different kinds of notices. Uh for A, we have a performance related, and uh the second type is behavior related. The third are blatant and de-employment related. There are four different categories. So depending on the circumstances, we decide whether a default notice should be issued. And if the situation is not that serious, we will issue a warning instead. Mister Wong asked about the procedures. Let's say we receive a complaint against the contractor that uh he is being lazy, or we will first conduct an investigation. If uh the complaint is substantiated, we will, depending on the situation, issue either a warning or a default notice. Prior to that, members are concerned about performance-related complaints. For instance, if uh the cleanliness is not up to standard, and if the situation is serious, we will issue either a verbal or written warning. But before we do that, we will let the contractor know first so that the uh situation can be rectified. And if it is not rectified, we will then issue a written warning. Mister Eman Wong, perhaps I did not make myself clear. Now, uh your system uh will only mark the uh issue dates, not the uh actual dates. But for some cases, there was a gap of seven days. Uh that is in relation to table two of the report. Given the uh time, the, the big time gap in between, what do you think is uh the reason and what remedy do you have? Now for the time lag between identification of non-compliances and issuance of warning letters and default notices, how come there are such big gaps? This is because uh the calculation is on the date of occurrence. For instance, we receive a complaint against a contractor that uh ten half a month ago, half a year ago, uh there was a default of duty. And so from the date of occurrence to the date of issuance, that is the time lag. As I said, a complaint uh might uh be about an incident that happened six months ago. So we believe the current way of recording may not be able to reflect our intent. And that is to issue a warning letter with And that is to issue a warning letter within seven days after substantiation of a certain problem. So we're going to improve our guidelines in the calculation of that seven days. Now, that seven days should be counted, starting from the completion of an investigation or substantiation of a complaint and then a warning letter issued. So right now, your mode of recording is a date of occurrence to the issuance of a warning letter, correct? But have you made this clear to the audit commission? Because that can be rather misleading. The report seems to say that you have done something wrong, but I agree that it may be a few days afterwards when you receive a complaint. And then after completion of examination, et cetera, it will be more than seven days. But then your mode of presentation may give the public the impression that you have taken too long. So have you communicated this to the audit commission so that you can present the real picture to the public more clearly? Director? Well, on issuance of warning letters and default notices, when audit, when the audit was done, we have made clear to them our procedures for issuing warning letters and default notices. As we said in the report, there was room for improvement in our current system. And so we've already told audit that we will improve our guidelines. Any supplement? From the director of audit? No, we don't have any. We'll wait for them to improve their guidelines. All right, next, Mister Long Huanbiu? Thank you. I would like to start with part one. Para one point four to one point six says that they will use mechanicals, street cleansing, sweeping and gully cleaning vehicles. There was no mention of refuse collection vehicles, which I believe are also indispensable. So my question to the director is, when it comes to mechanical or street washing machine, et cetera, I'd like to know the number of such vehicles in your fleets. And every year, I'd like to know the expenses in the procurement, repair and maintenance of such vehicles. I'd like to know whether they have all been included in that five point one billion dollars mentioned in para one point fourteen? Now, if I, if my memory serves me, for special vehicles under the F H D, we have about seven hundred numbers. That's from what I can recall now. And if I have made a mistake, I will supplement it. But I think we have about seven hundred odd. What about the second question? Now, for that five point one billion dollars, have you included all seven hundred vehicles? Or do you have a separate category? That five point one billion dollars is under para one point one four? Yes, under para one point one four. Now, for that five point one billion dollars, is staff cost, the expenditure for vehicle maintenance and repair is a separate sum? Can that, can the figure be given to us afterwards? For sure. Mister Liu Lo? Now, para one point eight of the report said that street cleansing services were delivered by its staff in-house as well as by contractors. And the outsourcing policy aims at greater cost effectiveness and flexibility in the delivery of services. As at the thirtieth of September twenty twenty four, about eighty-two percent of the street cleansing services were outsourced. Now, I, my question looks at a different perspective from that of Mister Luks. Given the policy objective of outsourcing is to enhance cost effectiveness and flexibility in the delivery of services, do you have plans to enhance the percentage of outsourcing? I'd like to know whether eighty-two percent is based on historical development or do you have any intention to make it a hundred percent? What is your plan? Director? Now, in para one point eight, we said that the current figure was eighty-two percent. Over the past few years, the percentage has maintained at about eighty percent. Whether we intend to increase it to a hundred percent? Now, we believe that the current percentage is about right. Why do I say so? Eighty-two percent represents six contractors. Each contractor accounts for about sixteen to seventeen percent of our services and is equivalent to the amount of services delivered by our staff in-house. While we want flexibility, we want to maintain a certain level of service to be provided in-house. Because in the event that a certain contractor cannot deliver its service, we will have sufficient strength in-house to make up for that shortfall so that the overall services for the contractor will not be affected. So each contractor will provide about sixteen to seventy percent of services. This is roughly the same amount what we are doing in-house. Mister Louis Long, thank you. I will now turn to part two. Report two point three eight, para two point three eight says that for each district E H Os, there is a multi-tier monitoring mechanism. And B, appendix B, has set out the details of your monitoring mechanism. Director, do you agree that the design of this multi-tier monitoring mechanism involves too many tiers and too much manpower? Is there room for streamlining or trimming the manpower? Thank you. As I said, there are different types of inspections. Under each category, there is a different objectives. For instance, for daily inspections, we have to ensure the contractors provide services that are up to our expectations. Formal inspections are few in number because the purpose of formal inspections is not to ensure that contractors fulfill the performance standards, rather is whether we have a proper performance benchmark. And for risk-based surprise inspections, as I said, when there is an emergency or if we have received intelligence that some beats were not properly cleansed, then we will conduct surprise inspections. So the frequency and also purpose of each type of inspection are different. It's true that we will review whether there are indeed too many tiers in our monitoring mechanism or whether there is room for streamlining the system. Now, colleagues are required to submit quite number of reports and then maybe duplication of tasks. Now, in future, we will reduce the requirement for manual filling out of forms and reports. Hopefully, we'll be able to save manpower and time. But with, there is room for the whole monitoring mechanism to be reviewed. Now, each type of inspection has its specific purpose and has also delivered what we want. And so we will first turn paper-based reporting system to electronic-based so that overall by using IT will make our service more cost-effective. This is the first step we are going to take.
Mister Lu, I agree with the direction that the department is going to take. We need to use digital technology to save cost. This will also prevent manual or human errors when filling out paper-based forms. Now, paragraph two point two four, it says that the inspection records filled out by inspectors should be filled into the E management system for in-house cleansing services. So that is an already existing system. So I don't know about the qualification of senior foremen and whether they are capable of entering data into the EMS. Mister Ng, paragraph two point four, concerning the educational attainment of senior foremen, I don't have the data right now. But I surely believe that our senior foremen and our in-house foremen are well versed in using the electronic record system. The computer system mentioned in paragraph two point two four, that is the EMS E management system for in-house cleansing services and pest control services, it is already in existence. Now, we are only using the EMS on recording daily inspection. I said we need to conduct, we need to engage a contractor to develop another system because we want to digitize the entire recording system. Mister Lu, this is my suggestion. In developing a new system, a thing you should aim at mobility. Make the system mobile and portable so that the staff does not have to go back to the office to enter the information, but rather with a handheld portable device, the staff can enter the information anywhere. That will make the record much more accurate. Mister Ng, that's a great idea. That's a consideration we have taken in developing our systems. Handheld device application is important to us. In terms of our licensing inspection and licensing system, we will issue handheld device to our staff. Mister Lu, thank you. Two point eleven. Now, the audit commission has audited the three D E H Os monitoring inspection reports between January twenty twenty-three to September twenty twenty-four. And it was found that for some inspections, these inspections were not conducted according to the prescribed timeframe and frequency. For Yunlong, there were some inspections with no scope specified. Now, according to the Yunlong D E H O in September twenty twenty-four, there was a shortage of manpower. Among the eighteen senior foreman positions, there were two vacancies amounting to eleven percent and there were some staffers on leave. So it seems that the shortage of manpower would directly impact on the quality of inspection and the frequency of inspections. Now, monitoring inspection heavily relies upon sufficient manpower. So does the F H D have plan to adopt, to deploy IP cameras more widely to save the manpower needed for monitoring inspections? Director? Indeed, concerning inspection, for monitoring inspection on outsourced street cleansing services, we do deploy senior inspector overseer to conduct the inspections. But there are certain period in the year when manpower is tense, for example, is tight. For example, in December twenty twenty-three, there was a vacancy of twenty-six percent in the grade of senior health inspector. So it did affect the inspection work. So we have stepped up recruitment for filling the post and since then, the situation has improved. For example, for inspector, in twenty twenty-three, the vacancy rate was twenty-six percent. As at May this year, the vacancy rate is only five percent. And also whether we would deploy monitoring technology, for example, IP cameras to monitor the work. Now, as I said, IP cameras can enhance our capability in monitoring illegal disposal of refuse. IP cameras can also help our monitoring work and inspecting work. Mister Lu? In paragraph two point one eight, the audit commission has audited the street cleansing service contracts for nineteen D E H Os, altogether thirty-three contracts. And it's noted that the total number of default notices issued was thirty-five on average for each contract. So among the thirty-eight contracts, among the contracts, the ten contracts with the largest number of default notices issued, they involved four contractors. And on average, among the ten contracts, an average of seventy-four default notices were issued with the one with the highest, with the one getting the largest number of default notice, receiving one hundred seventy-nine default notices. So in assessing, in assessing the tender proposals, has the F H D considered why these three contractors with poor performances were still able to win the bid? Is it unfair to those contractors who have complied with their contractual conditions? Director? Concerning the issuance of default notices, we adopt a stringent standard. Even for minor contravention, we would still issue the default notice. For serious ones like absence from work or falsification of reports, these would be serious contraventions. For minor contraventions like improper uniform, default notice would still be issued. Mister Lu asked whether contractors being issued with default notices were still able to win a bid? Now, under our tendering system, we would consider the past performance of the contractor over the past three years. One assessment, one evaluation criterion is whether default notice was issued. And there are different level of demerits points issued to various types of defaults. For serious defaults, more points would be deducted. For less serious mistakes, less points would be deducted. So for contractors which have provided services in the past, we would consider their past performances and whether default notices were issued. It will help reflect the past performance of the contractors in the tender exercise. Now, according to the audit report, some contractors with a large number of default notice issued were still able audit report, some contractors with a large number of default notice issued were still able to get a contract. But that's the minority. We will review the demerit point system under the tender exercise. Can we make improvements to ensure that contractors are more aware of their past performances? For example, besides demerits points, can we adopt an accumulative approach in points deduction? These directions we will explore. Mister Lung. Chairman, I think the director has touched the core of the issue. There is a limited number of eligible contractors in the market. So you are, you have to pick from the same pool. Even though there are lots of default notice record, that's a question of supply. So a more cogent question maybe. Do you have any strategies to make your contracts more attractive so that more competitors would join the fray? Director, Miss Lung is right. There are not a lot of choices in the market, but usually there, there would be a certain number of interested parties bidding for the contract, so we are not worried about the lack of competition. There are lots of conditions in terms of the tenure of the contracts and the scope of surface. So we don't think we need to drastically change the conditions to make our contracts more attractive. Mister Lung, I have several more questions. Why don't I pass my round to other members first before I ask my other questions? Thank you. Miss Yoonis Young. Thank you. Paragraph one point one four. So between twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, strats, street cleansing services, the expenditure is five point one billion dollars, but there is no breakdown concerning the types of services provided. So will the government make public the breakdown so that we know how much is spent on a certain type of service? Now, according to the public information rules, the government must make the initiative, must take the initiative to publish the details of the usage of public money. So without this breakdown, we can't tell whether the money is well spent. Mister Ng. Chairman, in terms of street cleansing and related services, the expenditure was five point one billion dollars. We will study whether a breakdown can be provided to members after the meeting. Thank you. One point eight. Now, outsourced contracts accounts, account for eighty-two percent of your services. But I wonder what's, how effective is the cost? Now, two point one four. The cost of outsourced, outsourced cleansing service in Shangshui Pole is unknown. So how did you arrive at the eighty-two percent ratio of outsourced services? Is that the general trend or are you trying to take back the work and assign them to in-house staff? You said the outsourcing policy aims at cost effectiveness, but there is no figure to justify your claim. So you can't convince the public that it is more cost effective to assign the work to outsourced contract, contractors. So how did you arrive as the conclusion that outsourcing the work is more cost effective? Mister Ng. Now, as we have mentioned just now, concerning in-house service and outsourced service. Now, we can't compare beats with beats. Sometimes the colleagues will be sharing the, deliver, will be sharing the duties together. So it is very difficult to break down the cost. Now, actually, most cost goes to wages of workers. So as I said, the wages for in-house staff and outsourced workers are not that different. But outsourcing policy is more effective because flexibility is higher. And the audit reports also mentioned that it is not very, it is not terribly easy to recruit workmen to colleagues. So we will conduct more job fairs and try harder to fill the vacancies, but there is still a fifteen percent vacancy rate for the workman two grade. It is difficult to lower the figure in a short time. On one hand, we are stepping up recruitment efforts, but it takes time compared with hiring in the private markets. And the attrition rate for the workman two grade has been quite high. Since we are less efficient in recruiting, it would be more flexible to outsource the work to the private market. Now, Miss Yoonis Young asked whether we would adjust the ratio of outsourced work from eighty-two percent. Actually, over the past few years, the level has hovered around eighty percent. We think this is more appropriate because we have six contractors shouldering some seventy percent of outsourced work each. And our in-house staff delivered eighty percent of the work. So if there is any disruption of services, the other contractors can still cover for each other. So we think that's the A two ratio between outsourced and in-house work is still appropriate. Miss Yoonis Young. I follow the director's logic. In terms of administration procedure and flexibility, the outsourcing policy has merits. But just once it break down about the five point one billion dollar expenditure and also the trend of equipment. We need more effective manpower deployment, so we need to tell the public all these information. I think we need to share with the public information on recruitment as well as the wages so as to convince the public. Another issue about attendance record and monitoring, two point six A, B, and C concerning street cleansing and sweeping, three D H O's in December twenty twenty-three. The default rate was zero point three percent, not terribly high. Now for gully cleansing, the default rate was zero point five percent. Poster removal, two defaults in six hundred operations. So it shows that there is a gap in terms of monitoring. No mistakes were found by the senior inspector in the monitoring process. Now, since records are all paper-based and there is no independent auditing exercise, the department said it would deploy technology to help improve the accuracy. Now, of course, paper-based records are vulnerable to manipulation. And the efficiency for inspection would be low as shown by the high default rates. So the senior inspectors have made obvious mistakes. So we need to enhance the monitoring system. And the department said it would use technology and electronic means to enhance the efficiency of monitoring. So you will be digitizing the daily attendance record. You will require private contractors to use electronic means as well. So will there be a real-time notification, notification system to notify you of any absence? And what's the general plan?
Mister Donald Ng. We have already started the preparation for the information system. How can we provide different functions? I believe this is close to the heart of a member. We need to reduce the use of paper-based record. As we mentioned, there are paper-based attendance records. Foreman, senior foreman, they are frontline workers and they have to check the attendance record. We want to streamline the procedures. We want to achieve interfacing with the system of contractors. So in the submission of attendance records and the reports, these can be done electronically. When senior foreman checked the attendance records, there were oversights as pointed out in the report. I understand this is not ideal, even if there is just one single mistake. In order to reduce the likelihood of mistakes, we will provide a function in the system. That is, we will require a hundred percent of the attendance records being submitted. Otherwise, the system will send notification and to to show any in-attendance record. For different types of inspections, the frequencies vary. Sometimes staff members may forget the frequency of the inspections, not just the person responsible for the inspections, but also their supervisors. They need to check whether they have conducted all the inspections that they need to perform. I'm thankful to the Audit Commission when it comes to management reports. Is there any room for improvement when it comes to inspections? I believe the system will help us in this regard. In, Miss Yoonis Young, in relation to the punching record, I mean, the attendance record, there should be, there could be false reporting. Is it possible to ask contractors to use electronic punching system? This will reduce the likelihood of false reports. Is it possible to use electronic punching system? Mister Ng. In relation to attendance record, is it possible to use another method? In other words, can we use any other method apart from manual record? Some contractors are already piloting the use of real-time response. Such response will also be beneficial to occupational safety. Say when a worker doesn't move for a long time, the G P S system will be able to identify such a situation. That will help not just with assistance, I mean attendance, but it will also help with occupational safety. There will be interfacing with the G P S system and we will consider all these functions in one go. Miss Yoonis Young, I'd like to ask about the demerit point system. The weighting factor of demerit points is actually very low. It just accounts for seven out of a hundred in total. In relation to past performance, it's about fifteen points. In two point one four, for serious default, two points will be deducted. In other words, the cost of non-compliance is actually on the low side. The consequences or penalties facing the contractors may not be serious enough. Then contractors will make like of such non-compliances. They won't be incentivized to, to strive for improvements. Even in the event of non-compliance, the impact on being awarded within, with another tenders isn't significant. A contractor was was deducted um one hundred seventy-nine points, but then still the contractor was awarded another contract. Will you review the demerit point system? Thank you. In two point one seven, we have the demerit point records. Records one, each employment-related default notice issued in respect of wages, daily maximum working hours and so on. Over a ruling period of thirty-six months, if three points have been deducted, then a contractor is debarred from bidding for non-skilled workers' contract for a period of five years. In relation to default notices as mentioned by members, we have considered whether a contractor has received any default notices as well as the number of such having been received. We will also take into account the gravity in the event of non-compliance. Even if a contractor has received default notices, it's still possible that the contractor will be awarded another contract. At present, this, the weighting of this factor is about fifteen percent. Is this a reasonable ratio in case of repeated non-compliance? In case of um many default notices, will we put in place a progressive mechanism? We'll take these into account. We will remind contractors to be mindful of default notices. Every contractor receives a default notice. Let me give you an example. For default notices in relation to service, for the first to the fifth default notices, two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. And the figures will increase as, as more default notices are issued. Say three thousand six hundred dollars for the six default notices. Close to ten thousand dollars for employment-related default notices. In other words, default notices do have an impact on the future likelihood of of the tenders being awarded to the contractors. Miss Yoonis Young, is fifteen percent too low? In Singapore, it's forty percent. In some other countries, it's about twenty-five percent. I understand there are penalties in place. When default notices improperly handled, there are penalties. I'm aware, I'm aware of this. Right now, we are paying five point one billion dollars. But then the amount of thousands of dollars is just, is just a drop in the bucket. It's quite insignificant. Therefore, I'd like to know whether the administration will review the situation in relation to negligence or default notice. in relation to negligence or default notices. Will more serious supervision be exercised on contractors? So that the supervision or monitoring will be even more effective. I believe we need to increase the ratio of these indicators. In relation to inspection indicators in Yunlong District, in three years, there weren't any cases detected. I'd like to know why no staff members have been disciplined as a result of such events. In relation to two point one one, brackets A one, brackets A two, rather, for Yunlong DEHO, there was no document, no documentation showing the six of the beats recovered in daily inspections. The vacancy ratio is on the high side in relation to the staff members working in the office. We are aware of this situation. We share Ms. Yoonis Young's concerns. Staff members need to know the job requirements. And we are looking into the situation in detail. We'll remind staff members as appropriate. Ms. Yoonis Young, I have two more questions. Should I ask right now or should I let other members speak first? It's well, probably we'll invite Ms. Carmen Khan to speak first. Thank you. I'm, I'm concerned about the cost-effectiveness of um the contracting mechanism. Just now, the lead member talked about the ratio of using contractors is as high as eighty-two percent. Eighty-two percent of the services are subcontracted. In other words, in-house staff members only are only responsible for eighteen percent of these services. We have a total of three thousand in-house staff members and ten thousand two hundred contracted staff. In other words, twenty-two point seven percent of the staff members are in-house, whereas the remaining are contracted staff. So I believe the figures are quite good. The figure is seventy-seven percent. For the five point one billion dollars in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four financial year, we don't have any breakdown on this figure. How can we know the expenses spent on street cleansing services? If we just look at the real figures, it's not accurate enough. I want to know how the FEHD thinks about this. What is your take on the cost-effectiveness of such services, Mister Ng? Well, I don't want to repeat my point, but I do want members to understand. We need to compare oranges with oranges. Ideally, we want to achieve these figures. I mean, um ideally, we do want to have such a breakdown as well. That is those spent on in-house staff members whereas, as well as those spent on contracting staff. A total of ten thousand contracted staff members. In addition to these staff members, we need to conduct inspections as well. And these are done by in-house staff members. This will incur staff costs as well. How can we keep the most accurate figures? It's not that easy to do so. We want to have a reference figure. That's why, as I said, from a perspective of staff costs, salaries take up the largest portion. It's about the deployment of resources in relation to cost effectiveness. As member mentioned, is it possible that um contractor staff members do a better job in relation to street cleansing services? There's no evidence showing more complaints if the streets are cleansed by contractor staff members. It hinges on individual situations in some districts. Say any illegal dumping of litter or miscellaneous items. It's not just about the quality of staff members. There's no evidence showing that it will be more ideal if we only use in-house staff members. In the audit commission's report, it talked about whether we need to increase the percentage having regard to the situation and the in-attendance record. We have taken that into account as well. We have already explained the rationale behind it. Eighty-two percent, that is a ratio of two to eight. I cannot see any pressing need to only employ contractor staff members. That's why we need to draw more reference from the figures we have. Apart from staff costs, we need to draw reference from other costs as well. See, we need to compare the unit costs as well. We do want to do such a comparison, but then we don't have such indicators at hand right now. Thank you, Ms. Carmen Khan. In-house staff members and contractor staff members, I understand it's difficult to make a comparison. But what about comparing this year with another year? Say twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, five point one billion dollars were spent. In two point three three of the report, the percentage of in-house street cleansing services slightly went down from nineteen percent to eighteen percent from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. What about expenses? You may compare apples and apples. If you don't have such information, you may provide later on. I'm not sure if I have made myself clear enough. I'd like to ask about the the comparison year-on-year in relation to the same category of services. Say twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four, we have information between twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. What about comparisons on the same category of services? We may compare the information between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. Well, I can see an improvement in your overall cleanliness in the streets. We also have a cross-departmental working group led by the deputy chief secretary for administration. Road and control, unlawful shop front extension. I understand the um working group has a wide purview. Mister Ng, in relation to overall expenses, street cleansing services covering in-house staff members and contractor staff members in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, the figure was about four point six, forty-six billion dollars, four point six six billion dollars and four point two three billion dollars. Such figures aren't present in the report. Well, can you go slower? Thank you. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, the overall expenses is expenses were four point two six six billion dollars. In twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, the figure was four point three oh four billion dollars. And then four point three four five billion dollars. That is the revised estimate. This is information I have on, I have at hand. In relation to street cleansing services, the expenditure is about the same. In relation to effectiveness, the working group led by the deputy chief secretary for administration, there are a total of seven hundred black spots. Two hundred and forty-six black spots are managed by the FEHD in the past few years. For the two hundred and forty-six black spots managed by the FEHD, we have managed to remove seventy, seventy percent of the black spots from the list. I'm thankful to Ms. Carmen Khan. The level of street cleansing or the overall hygiene in the streets in Hong Kong saw an improvement. In relation to resources, I've already mentioned that. And we have seen a reduction of um black spots in Hong Kong. Thank you.
Miss Khan, the number of uh black spots, so there was a reduction of seventy percent compared to what it was in the past, am I correct? Mister Yu, deputy director. Yes, that is very true. Uh, the uh task force on uh tackling of hygiene black spots are led by the deputy um secretary. Now, the number has been, the number of black spot has reduced by seventy percent. All right, page seventy. Page seventy, appendix A. Can you explain to us? Now, in terms of uh black spot, in terms of the different um regions, I'd like to know the uh standard for inspections and the guidelines. Which division is responsible for making them? The government program on tackling hygiene black spots, all right? I'd like to know whether you will improve the situation. You have a five-tier monitoring mechanism. I'd like to know which division is responsible for working that out. And under appendix A, I'd like to know how you have this employment of contractors. Do you have a review mechanism? Now, there is a surface quality accreditation system. I'd like to know whether this is responsible for uh vetting of document, of tenders. Now, for the structure, in appendix A, we have our organization chart. But in fact, in each district, we have a DEHO responsible for hygiene issues in that district. So for streets cleansing, sweeping and services, each district is responsible for its own. Now, in addition to these nineteen districts, we have a monitoring mechanism. So uh we have uh three operations division. Take operations division one as this example, is responsible for the uh DEHOs on Hong Kong Island. Operations division two is responsible for DEHOs in Kowloon and the division three is responsible for DEHOs in the new territories. So for each district, we have a DEHO. And then uh at headquarters, we have operations division to oversee their services. What about the standards? Now, under the operations divisions, they have to monitor services provided by DEHOs. And they are also responsible for their respective areas. Take street cleansing services as an example. The standard to be attained for all nineteen DEOs is the responsibility of operations division three. And that is we have an oversight of inspections to be carried out by DEHOs. And the uh establishment and review of the whole system is the responsibility of operations division three. For contracts of DEHOs, tender assessments and vetting are done by the respective DEHOs. Ms. Carmen Khan, thank you. In this audit report, issues are identified. I'd like to know that will prompt the department to review its current operation. You're very much district-based, so uh districts in the NT and in Kowloon on Hong Kong Island may have their respective needs. And you have to divide uh each district into different beats for inspection. But then, I'll let you know where the there is another structure to oversee the work of the three different divisions. Now, for the nineteen DEHOs, they have to comply with certain standards and number of inspections. Uh, the operations division three at the headquarters level is responsible for all these standards. And to oversee the delivery of these standards. So uh development of a system and a review of guidelines. Operations division three is responsible for uh making that up and the uh actual execution is by DEHOs. They are concerned that there might be inconsistencies in practice across the different DEHOs. Now, we have to consider the unique circumstances. We cannot uh require all districts to do the same. But it's true that we may need to make our guidelines more specific and detailed so that our DEHOs will have a more objective standard for uh setting their goals and standards. For instance, enforcement teams, we are going to discuss later. How do they work out their plans? Now, for some districts, they only uh require inspection of two spots for some ten, two locations or ten locations. Because uh the uh different districts may have different standards for delineating a certain location. So in future, our guidelines will be more specific. So on a central level, we have to enhance our supervision. And we have to allow different districts to take into account their unique circumstances in terms of execution and enforcement, Ms. Khan. Now, appendix C of the report, it is said that as of September twenty twenty-four, for thirty-eight contracts that are recently completed, there are ten contracts with the greatest number of default notices issued. There are contracts A to J. On average, seventy-four default notices were issued. So if the demerit point system was was strictly enforced, then some of them have um should be forbidden from further bidding for reaching employment-related or blatant mistakes. So I like, but then, none of them have been uh prohibited from further bidding. So I'd like to know whether there were such cases in the past. And then uh the director also talked about deduction of money, monthly fees. But I don't have the contract sums with me. Can the department tell us? Now, I don't have, I don't need all contracts from A to J. But then, I like, we know the amount of deductions for them. What about the contractors themselves so that I have an idea of your management? So you'll have the, I'd like to have the reports themselves, I mean, the contracts themselves and also the contract amount. I think this involves our contractual details with contractors. I think this involves our contractual details with contractors. But for contracts A to J, the total amount of deductions vis-a-vis the total contract sum. Now, I don't have such information with me. I don't know whether my colleagues have them. You can give us a written reply later. We would like to have a report, a written reply from you. We won't be able to uh do a proper analysis now anyway. Has any contractor been prohibited from bidding for further contracts in the past? Secretary, now there we do have a mechanism on the demerit point system. No, no, no. Uh, in the interest of time, you don't have to explain that demerit point system to us. My question was, was any contractor ever prohibited from bidding, from bidding for contracts in the past? There is a central record for such cases. We have to check the record because uh we have a central record. We have to know uh all um contracts before we uh know that there was anyone ever uh prohibited from uh bidding for contracts. Now, you still talk about the mechanism. I'd like to know whether ever any contractor was prohibited from bidding. Now, if a three demerit points uh were deducted, then the contractor would be banned from uh further bidding. And then whether there was anyone who had been uh deducted more than three points. We do not just take the F V H D. There is a central register for all government contracts. Whether there, there were, whether any contractor has been deducted more than three points, I have to check our records, Miss Khan. I think this has brought out an issue that we should review. You, you should be managing your own vendor or contractor. As a vendor, you should manage your contractor. So if you have to take into account uh their performance in other uh service contracts of government departments, that means your hands are tied. And I don't quite understand why you have to consider so many other factors. And you also mentioned uh that system of seven uh points or fifteen demerit points. This mechanism is going to be reviewed, so I will not labor on that point. Because if the design is not satisfactory, you uh may impact on the effectiveness of the system. Now, there are actually two kinds. Now, for cases where three demerit points have been deducted, then uh the contractor is banned from bidding for all government contracts. The objective is to ensure that contractors will not breach any employment-related requirements. This is to safeguard our labor force. But when it comes to flexibility, that is whether we will provide flexibility to contractors to ensure that they comply with our requirements. We have that fifteen-point system to reflect their past performance in the past three years. If uh they have uh been serving in F H D contracts and they have received default notices, that means this is something we have to take into account. So we will look at the past three years, whether a contractor, when delivering services to the F H D, has received any default notices. So we have got our own fifteen-point system. And you may refer to a document submitted to the council. And that is about our demerit point system. Apart from that fifteen demerit points, uh we've also got this seven point, which is the demerit point record for covering all government services. And that's why we have two different levels, Miss Khan. Now, paragraph two point one eight is a question for the audit commission. I'd like to know whether the audit finds the response from F H D acceptable? Because my impression from paragraph two point one eight was among the um four contractors, three has got points deducted related to uh blatant and also behavior-related issues. But then, they were all given another contract. Is my understanding of paragraph two point one A correct? Director of audit. Thank you, Chair. I don't think we are any um different from what the department said. Because what we stated is a fact, uh so uh they haven't been deducted the number of uh points. But does that mean that they should still be awarded contracts? What we have stated here is a fact. So uh under the mechanism, they haven't been uh deducted the number of points to the point that they should be banned from further bidding. Please, you're off mic. Yes, there were demerit point uh recorded, but then they were not up to the uh ceiling. And so there was no record of debauchment. Can you please stick to one single language, as I apologize? So for the three contractors, they've all been uh recorded one demerit point. But because they have not reached that three points, so they were allowed to uh bid for further contracts. So this is uh consistent with what the uh director of F H said. So we have already, we're already two hours into our meeting. I think all members have completed their first round of questions. And for the second round, we still have Mister Benson, look Mister Lewis Lung and also uh Miss Junis Young. I suggest we take a break of ten minutes and we resume at four forty P M. We will start our second session. By then, thank you.